Welcome to the Fortuna City Council Meeting for Monday, City Council Meeting for Monday, September 18th. Can you please join me for the flag salute? Roll call, please. Councilmember Conley?
Present.
Councilmember Losi?
Here.
Councilmember Mobley?
Here.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Trent? Okay, our next item is oral public, or oral comments from the public. Anybody from the public that would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? And we limit our speakers to three minutes. Anybody come on up to the microphone, please, and state your name?
So yeah, I'm sorry, it probably wasn't close enough to the microphone. So yeah, my name is Marty Dowd. I'm not originally from Fortuna. I'm from Santa Cruz. I'm from Aptos, that general area. And part of what I thought, I don't know how many of you remember, but do you remember when Mr. Went used to kind of run the town? Well, that's my, that's my dream. I want to kind of run the town now that, you know, following his legacy. But I don't want to do it off a construction company. I want to do it off the backs of my, backs of my county down in Santa Cruz, if that's possible. And how it would work is I would get Santa Cruz to back Humboldt. If they would do that, then I could get either Aptos or Capitola to back Fortuna. Now, Aptos could back Fortuna, and they have a lot more in common as far as elegance and stuff. But the problem I foresee with that is Aptos isn't a city. And if there's legal matters there where Aptos can't join because they're not a city, then Capitola would be the next best bet. Either way, whatever town that you choose to go in with us and back the union and bring in more money to the area. I'll just give you an example. For instance, I was walking across the bridge the other night on my way back from the brewery or something. I believe it was Saturday night. And I, I just realized every time I cross that bridge over 12th Street, I almost get hit almost every time because there's no guardrail or anything to keep traffic from hitting you. I have to be very careful. So I just thought if the town had a little more money coming from Santa Cruz County up here, that we'd have more money to be able to make things happen. I don't know if you think I look like a fool, or if this idea would actually work. Because I talked to Mr. Clendenon about it today. He used to be a county supervisor. And he said he liked the idea, but he thinks it would be really tough. So what about you? What do you guys think?
Well, this isn't on the, on the agenda, so we can't discuss it.
Right. Yeah, I knew that.
But thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Move on to the consent calendar. Anyone want to pull anything?
I wanted to pull C.
Okay.
I'd like to pull E and I, please.
C, E, and I. Okay, and you, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to say I noticed that in the, in the report they did that they talked about the online portal. And I just wanted to let whoever put that together know that they did a great job. It's very user-friendly. So I would encourage, obviously, all contractors for permits have to use it now, but it's very user-friendly. They get right back to you. And good job to whoever put that together. I also wanted to talk about the Walker Elementary Project. I need to, I'm curious what's happening with that project. It's, it's just a mess there with the contractors that are working. So I know it's not on the agenda, but I am curious about that.
Yeah, just in response, Mayor Trent. The, first of all, Katie Schmidt, our Senior Administrative Assistant, the Community Development Department, she played a big role. All the staff members in the Building Department did for the building permit, and we're getting ready to roll out all of our planning permits. So Katie Schmidt deserves a lot of the credit for seeing that through and being the one who managed that project. And then secondary, we, we don't have a project right now at Walker Elementary School, but there is a project, I know they're doing a lot of updates, but be happy to reach out to Amy Betts and get more information on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes, E, the Parks and Recreation Report. I'm seeing that again, for the month of August, that we're roughly 240 hours over the allotted time or projected time for the part-time recreation staff hours. So I think at this point, hopefully, there's a consensus here. I think we need to put in place some type of a process that we get real-time reporting on a daily basis for the part-time recreation staff. And on a monthly basis, then, once those hours that are projected have been reached, then there's no more, the people that are working part-time for those positions or in those positions go home. We've run across this, you know, too many times. I think we need to have a, some kind of a program in place, a process in place to control these hours, because that's not happening. Hopefully, we'll have a consensus to that.
Well, I agree that we do have to do something. There's supposed to be tracked daily, you know, how many hours are left. And there, I mean, I can understand for the skate programs, but there's not anything going on, you know, last, as, as far as additional recreation stuff. So it might be, I don't know if it's office work or what it is, but to have the hours that are allotted, and then that's got to stop until the next, because we, we can't have Parks and Recreation coming back again and asking for more hours or more people. You've got to work within your budget. So I agree with what you're saying on that.
So just a couple of comments. One, and I'll be happy to have Cameron explain what happened this month and why there were more hours than budgeted. Again, it's a budget, and their goal is to meet the overall budget by the end of the year. But agreed, it's concerning that when you start going over 200 hours, where are you going to make that up? You know, is that going to happen next month, too? Is it, when are you going to be able to reduce that to balance it? And that the, the budget established by council needs to be met unless there's some other approval beforehand. Real-time, I'll just say monitoring the number of recreation hours real-time is probably not practical. Probably the shortest basis I would really want to do that is on a week. You know, I think Cameron could work with our recreation supervisor to do that on a daily basis, but the most frequently, I'd probably take a look at that as on a weekly basis. And then, again, you know, every other week when we do our time sheets. But real-time's probably not practical, but we'd be happy to look at that more closely. And it is concerning going over. But if you'd like to hear from our Parks Director about what they were doing, I have discussed that with him. Or if you just want to express that it's important to the council that we meet that budget, and going over is unacceptable without prior approval, then the comments are heard.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not interested in an explanation. I'm interested in making sure that that doesn't happen month after month. So, and, and as far as real-time, so you have somebody responsible, whether it's Emily or whomever, to, you know, gauge how many hours and, and watch how many hours are coming in on a monthly ba, or on a daily basis, and then looking at that at the end of the week. We shouldn't be 240 hours over. It's close to 240, but that's a lot of money over. So a lot of, I just, I think that we need to put a process in place to monitor that closer.
My main concern with going over monthly is the last month of our fiscal year is our biggest month. That's when we have summer fun. And I don't want to have to cut summer fun back, you know, so kids can't go because we don't have the hours. That's my biggest concern.
Well, I'd just say I, I have reviewed the hours that have, went over with our Parks Director. I know they were doing productive work, but also understand that, you know, we need to live within that budget and the projection, or have a reason why not. So, you know, if the council would like to hear from Cameron, he's here. Otherwise, you know, we're happy to, to just continue to track that and make sure that we live within that budgeted number of hours.
I would actually just like to set up a meeting to go meet with you and go over what you're doing and-
Sure.
And have that better explained.
Yep, yep. But I did want to make it clear that this reports for the month of August, we still operated our summer fun and our kiddie camps in August. So 80% of those hours went towards summer fun and kiddie camp programs. Also, if you noticed in July, we were 200 hours under. So right now, we're kind of at a zero point. Thanks.
Your next comment? Aye?
Aye. Please, that's the report of dispersments. And I noticed in looking at the report of dispersments, maybe, Aaron's here, but on page three of the first report, which is payment dates of 9-1 through 9-7, a expenditure for PG&E of $30,989 and some cents. And then, let me find the next one. On page three of seven, this is the second report, the date of 9-13, an expenditure PG, on PG&E for $29,244 and some odd cents. I asked Merritt about that, and apparently, a lot of that, $8,000 and some odd dollars was because of a well pump running more than, than normal. But what about the rest of that? It's an expenditure of almost $60,000, and accounted for, you know, down to 52,000, you know, 51,000. That's still a, a huge amount of money. And that doesn't count all the payments that we're making to PG&E. So if anybody has an explanation for those large numbers, I would appreciate hearing that.
Yeah, and I think Aaron can probably give you a sense of what it is to the, from a month-to-month basis. And then, you know, as, as you noted, that we did have a project going where normally we pumped during off-peak hours, and we were pumping on-peak hours because we had our Campden Height tank down and our Hillside tank down. But Brendan can give you, our Public Works Director, can give you an explanation about that as well. But maybe Aaron can put it in context of what our bills normally are versus what we saw this month.
Yeah, so that first bill for $30,000, we did notice that that was way higher than budgeted. So we reached out to Chris, and that's when he gave us the pumping, you know, issue that they were having. So that explains that one. Typically, that bill is around $15,000 a month, so it was twice, you know, our historical average for that particular bill. The other one that you pointed out, the $20,000 one, that is for the wastewater treatment plant, and that is a typical bill for the wastewater treatment plant. We budget over $240,000 strictly for PG&E for the wastewater treatment plant a year. So that is, you know, what we typically see on a monthly basis and include it in our, our wastewater budget.
So it's not outlined here, it's just 7-7-4-5-7. So how do you know that that, I mean, other than the huge amount of money that we're expending there? That's how you know it goes to the wastewater?
Yeah, so based on the account number, the description has the account number, and so we, that's how we break down by location and where to charge it to.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All your questions?
That's it.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I make a motion, we approve the consent calendar?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our first item of business is public hearing, first reading, and adoption of ordinance 2023-762, amending Title 15, Building and Construction of the Fortuna Municipal Code by adding Chapter 15.48, Construction and Demolition Debris Diversion, CD3. Staff report?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Honorable Counsel. Pleasure to be here for the second first reading of this ordinance. The CD3 ordinance, which I'm just going to go over who it impacts, I'm just going to go over the ordinance. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. The covered projects are basically anybody who gets a building permit in the city of Fortuna. They will be required to do a waste management plan as part of their application package. And to get their permit released to them, they'll have to have a final report that shows that they met a 65% recycling rate on their waste. Within that, there are projects that are larger, and they are from $200,000 or 1,000 square feet. As those apply to residential, there'll be a flat rate of $500 and $175 administration fee. And then for all non-residential, it will be $500 or 0.25% of the project cost. Within this, there are exemptions, and people have the ability to ask for forgiveness because of extenuating circumstances. Exemptions apply to emergency-type situations that are mandated by the city. Those retainers, the $500 or the 0.25%, are subject to be returned to the parties that put them up if they meet the 65% recycling requirement. And that's pretty much a nutshell.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Okay.
Staff recommends that council approve the first reading by title only of Resolution 762, CD3.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open public comment. Anybody from the public have anything to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Madam Mayor, I'll go ahead and move to hold the first reading of ordinance 2023-762, read, and read by title only, to continue the public hearing to Monday, October 2nd, 2023, for the second reading.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ordinance 2023-762, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, adding Chapter 15.48 to Title 15 of the Fortuna Municipal Code, Construction, Demolition, Debris Diversion Ordinance, CD3. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes. Thank you. Our next item is authorize the purchase of a magnesium hydroxide, did I say that right? Tank and feed system, Resolution 2023-28. Staff report, please.
Yes, hello. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Let me provide a brief background on this agenda item. In the wastewater treatment process, natural biological activity of the microorganisms creates an acidic environment. To neutralize this acidity and thus avoid any potential effluent violations, we have historically added sodium hydroxide, or caustic soda, to increase the pH. Caustic has many drawbacks. It's hazardous. It will burn skin and eyes on contact and requires a lot of PPE that staff have to wear to be safe. It's also very corrosive. It will erode concrete, burn wooden walls of a building. And it requires a, and caustic also has a very high freezing threshold, where it freezes at 60 degrees Fahrenheit. So we have to maintain constant energy-intensive heating to prevent that from freezing. It's also very toxic. So if there's an accidental spill or overfeed of caustic, it will potentially kill our microorganisms, causing more effluent violations and disruptions in the treatment process. It's also very high in sodium, which adds total dissolved solids to the effluent, which is a constituent of concern for the water boards, more potential violations. So beginning last year, staff looked for alternatives to caustic and identified the most promising chemical as magnesium hydroxide, or milk of magnesia. This is a common compound found in antacids. When comparing this chemical to caustic, there is no contest. Mag is safe. It will not burn skin and eyes. You do not need PPE to, to work with it. It's non-corrosive. You can spill it on the ground, on wood, nothing's going to happen. Lower freezing threshold. It freezes at 32 degrees Fahrenheit, just like water, so we don't need to have intensive heating. Non-toxic, so if we accidentally spill it, or there's an accidental overdose into the system, it's not going to kill our microorganisms. The pH, in fact, the pH of mag is 10.5, and caustic is 14, on a scale of 0 to 14. It is also has less sodium, so less TDS in the effluent. And another benefit is it improves settling, so it, that'll help the downstream treatment processes at the plant. Another great benefit to mag over caustic is that mag is a more concentrated buffering agent. In fact, due to the chemistry between the two compounds, it would take 1.6 pounds of caustic to equal only 1 pound of mag. This means that we will feed much less chemical. So and best of all, mag currently costs less, less than caustic. To be exact, caustic is 70 cents per pound, while mag is 55 cents per pound. And we're using 200-plus thou, 200,000-plus pounds per year. So not only are we using less of it, but we are paying less, too. So with all that in mind, the city began an extended trial with the use of magnesium hydroxide last year. We found a supplier that could loan us a rental tank and feed system. To date, the trial has proven very successful. In addition to a dramatic improvement to safety, staff estimate that the city has saved approximately $40,000 over the last year by using mag instead of caustic. Recently, staff solicited quotes for a permanent 5,000-gallon tank system. This will equate to a much longer time in between deliveries and fewer subsequent delivery charges. Based on preliminary estimates, the cost will range between $50,000 to $55,000. Staff are seeking approval to award a contract for up to $60,000 for this purchase. Upon council approval, staff will finalize the quotes and ultimately purchase the system from the lowest bidder. However, due to the cost of this purchase, city purchasing policy requires a formal bidding process. Staff is recommending that council make an exception to this process, also citing purchasing policy, because staff believes, believes it is in the city's best interest. Formally bidding the purchase will add cost to the overall procurement of the materials due to bonding, advertising, et cetera. It will also add four to six weeks to the timeline, which are critical as we approach the rainy winter months. During these months, flows increase at the plant, which in turn increases chemical feed. The winter also makes it, makes deliveries more challenging to our area due to drivers' accessibility. Purchasing through quotes will allow staff to initiate the purchase process immediately. So with that in mind, I, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Go ahead.
I just have one quick question. How would this system integrate into the projected improvements that are planned in the future for the treatment plant?
It, it goes well. There, the, this system will pay for itself in a couple of years, so even if it's not needed with the, with the improvement plan or with the improvement project, it, it still comes in handy, because we're, that is not going to really be implemented for over five years. And, but even if, even when we have that, we still have to have a backup source of extra alkalinity in case of pH decrease, in case of some kind of acidic problem. It allows for that flexibility in the treatment.
Okay, and it's projected we'll save about $10,000 a year?
More like $40,000 per year.
$40,000, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll open public comment. Any comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2023-28 and read by title only.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. Moving on to our next item, supplemental budget request for the purchase of new body worn, worn camera program.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Trent. Honorable Counsel, I'd also like to start my staff report with a little bit of background tonight. So prior to the adoption of the current budget, staff had identified the need to replace the body worn camera program within the police department. And so as we prepared for adoption of the budget and looking at, you know, what tools we had to, or options we had to kind of look at financing this new program, we were also shopping some of the more reputable vendors in the body worn camera industry. And so through that shopping and the competitive bidding process, Motorola Solutions actually emerged as the city's best option. And they were considered the best option for a number of reasons. Not only were they the low bidder, but also offered the city the opportunity to make payments of about $25,000 over five years. And so that was appealing to, to staff because essentially, the thinking was, is that it would, you know, initially reduce the impact all at once to, to the city for cost. So the overall price for the new package is about $130,000. And so when we adopted the budget, we included a $25,000 line item with the intention of essentially adopting that same amount over the course of the next five years to pay for the program. On Sept, on September 6th of 2023, I received notification from the USDA that we had received approval for a $50,000 grant from the Rural Assistance Grant to help pay for this body worn camera program. Unfortunately, by accepting the grant, it reduces our ability or eliminates our ability to make those payments of $25,000 over five years, because generally speaking, the USDA likes to see their projects completed within the year that they, you know, give the grant to the city. So that's essentially where we are. The current ask would be for a supplemental budget request in the amount of $53,830 from the General Reserves. And essentially, that would accomplish paying for the cost of the project, realizing the $50,000 in grant funding that we would be receiving from USDA, and the $25,000 budget aligned item that we already have. So in talking with staff, we would continue to budget that $25,000 over the next two years with the intent on, you know, returning that money to the General Fund Reserve. I just want to take a second to talk about the benefits of body worn camera. The city adopted and implemented the body worn camera back in 2011. These body worn cameras, you know, more than anything, give the city the ability to reduce risk and, you know, limit liability. It increases public trust. It provides for digital evidence in our prosecutions, and, you know, essentially protects our officers from frivolous complaints. So they are very important, and although not currently required, excuse me, by the legislature, it is common and considered best practices for law enforcement agencies in California. As I stated earlier, the immediate fiscal impact would include an SBR totaling $53,830 from the city's General Fund Reserves. Staff is recommending the council approve the SBR for the purchase of a new body worn camera program, including equipment, and again, recognizing revenue from the USDA Rural Development Assistance Grant. That concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll open public comment. Any comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget request for the purchase of new body worn camera program.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then, moving on to our last item on business, is approve changes to the Community Development Department, including amended, or amendments to the organizational chart. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. Real briefly, I have one presentation I want to share, so give me one second to pull that up. Well, before we start that. So, so real briefly, staff is recommending that the council approve proposed staff classification and full-time pay rate schedule changes for the Community Development Department. The longtime Deputy Director of Community Development, Liz Shory, retired on April 18th, 2023, and since her retire, retirement, and for some time before, we've had our Senior Administrative Assistant, who's taken on a variety of tasks of more responsibility that require more- that require more responsibility and judgment in addition to what would normally be considered senior administrative tasks. In the staff report, there's some examples of those things, but interpreting laws and codes and regulations and ordinances, interpreting planning and zoning programs, responding to issues of concerns in the public and responding to their application questions, preparing staff reports and delivering staff reports to the planning commission, investigating and documenting nuisance complaints, and facilitating public hearings, coordination of special projects. One of those special projects was the new online portal for building permits and planning permits, and then reviewing and responding to development proposals. There have been additional tasks that our senior administrative assistant has taken on, the absence of a full-time community development director, such as some of our long-term planning goals, looking at a noise ordinance, some of our general plan updates she's participated in. So she's really been doing a great job. One of the things when we look at this is we want to make sure that we're not just reclassifying somebody because they're doing a great job. We really, we looked at a number of job descriptions from community development coordinator to planning positions, and a lot of times, we try to compare in the local area. And so the closest that we could find is the planning, the planner one, two. City of Arcata has a very similar description, and we adopted that to the city of Fortuna and almost took it verbatim. And there was a lot of consistency between the planning positions, both in the city of Fortuna, the description from city of Arcata, city of Eureka. And so we're able to look at those and to feel very comfortable that the duties that are being done by this employee are that consistent with a planner two. So in recognition of that, staff is recommending adding a new classification of planner two in which the current senior administration, administrative assistant would move to and with that change, that a change to the full-time pay rate classification for the new planner two be placed, that the planner two be placed in F39, which is a difference approximately $4,457 annually at the top end of the pay scale. One of the things that we'll be doing, really, our senior administrative assistant has a lot of on-the-job training, but one of the things that she would need is a planning certificate, so we would allow her a reasonable amount of time to be able to receive that certificate and some of the formal training that might be necessary. But right now, you know, we're very pleased that we have somebody in-house that can fulfill that role, that could step up and take care of those additional duties and really handle things in a very practical manner. One of the things that we discussed at a staff level is should we, you know, reconsider whether or not we need a community development director? Currently, that position is budgeted for, but we're using a consultant as a staff planner. You know, that, you know, it's, things are working well right now, but I think in the long term, one of the things that I've recognized as we've been considering is that as city manager, it's hard to spend enough time with community development. Right now, I probably spend less than 10% of my time, and there's a need for much more. And so, you know, in going through this process with our finance director, our human resources director, is really the realization that we do need to have a department head, so we don't want to eliminate a department head position. And so I think in the long term, it's in the best interest of the city to have a department head in that position. So the only change we want to make now is to move our senior administrative, our senior administrative assistant to a planner two level. And there's a significant amount of overlap in those, so if you look at our senior administrative assistant level right now, that tops out at $59,500 roughly, so there's a little more than $4,000 difference. But I think the city would be well-served by having this reclassification and having a community development director. Right now, we just don't physically have the space in city hall, so we did recruit twice for a community development director. We were unsuccessful. We got some applications, and then they disappeared, so I don't think they really submitted in earnest. My thought is when the police move over sometime in the first quarter of next year, then we'll have more space. So maybe around the end of the year, we'll start recruiting again for a community development director, but for the next few months, that will continue to use a consultant to do our planning. And then when we have more space and we can bring somebody on and have the department more organized, then we would, you know, we'll bring that recruitment back slightly before and just fly it until filled. And I still don't know why we haven't got anybody yet for that position because I think the salary that we budgeted is reasonable, and it seems like it's a, it's a position that there's a lot of planners with a significant amount of experience would want to move into. So I think we can be successful at that in the long term and not look at any compensation for community development director. Let's see, so as I mentioned, the, you know, the outside cost increase for this change would be up to about $5,000, and I had our finance director look at that. So it's not just the salary, but when you pay somebody more, the benefits go up commensurate with that. And so that is my recommendation to approve the staff reclassification and the full-time pay rate schedule change for the community development department. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, just some comments. I think you're absolutely right that this has more to do with the community development director position than increasing this position to a planner two or whatever, one or two. So when we get to the point of hiring a community development director, how much of this job as a planner two would actually be done by the community development director? Question number one. And then would it be better to wait until we do have a community development director onboard and that person is onboard for a while so that they can determine whether we need to put somebody in a planner two position? I'm just throwing those ideas out for...
No, I understand. So just let me restate the question. You know, would the same level of responsibility be necessary for our senior administrative assistant if we had a community development director?
Right.
And I would say, you know, we had a deputy director who was intended to act at a director level, and really, you know, I think it'll serve the city better to, you know, I wouldn't expect that our senior administrative assistant would do less. You know, right now, she's really taking on the tasks that are needed to run the day-to-day permits, but one of the things, you know, the current applications we have and a lot of the tasks that are the higher-level tasks right now are getting put to our consultant. So I would see her doing the same number of things, you know, really kind of having the oversight of all the permits, you know, doing the counterwork for the planning. But what I would see is that when we have a community development director, they could actually go for some of the more long-range planning things. And that's something we haven't seen for some time, is a community development director who is actually pursuing some of those longer-term planning goals. A lot of times, we've waited for consultants to do that work, and we haven't really been as quick as we should on some of those things, and we've been behind on those. You know, one example is the housing element took the city quite some time, and to be able to do that, some of the ordinances that we, you know, there's always new ordinances that are required to comply with state law. So I see there being a pretty clear division. If you could have, you know, a planner two that does those routine tasks that are coming through, building permits, subdivisions, those things that we see all the time, and then you have a community development director that's focusing more on those long-range tasks, I think it'll be a really good complement. And then we're not going to, you know, the other thing would have the benefit if you have a community development director. They're not going to get burdened with that day-to-day bit, and they can really focus on those long-range. So, you know, we spent a lot of time thinking about this, and I think that that would be the best scenario for the city in the longer term.
Well, I certainly understand what you're saying. I have an issue as far as starting a person out who doesn't have the certificates as a planner two as opposed to a planner one, and then working into the position if they so desire. Again, we're using a consultant staff planner, and we're paying that person or that firm. Is that going to continue? I don't see how we can stop that as long as we don't have a community development director. I'm wondering if maybe the money would be better spent, if that is the issue as far as not getting enough applications, if the money would be better spent in increasing the pay on the community development director position so that we might attract some more applicants there.
I don't, I don't think a small, a modest increase of $4,000 a year is really going to change somebody who's going to go for the community development director. I guess one of the other things that I would say is that we're recognizing a significant savings right now using a consultant. So right now, I think our costs for that consultant are probably about $3,000 a month, where when you look at a full-time budgeted position, it's, you know, the salary's a little over $100,000, and the benefits are probably $35,000. So we're seeing a pretty big savings, at least in this year, by doing that. But it's taking a lot of my time away to be involved and make decisions and be at all the planning commission meetings and get into the details of each one of the projects we have, leading the mill site specific plan, leading our housing design standards. And those things could be better spent on other endeavors. So I really see it as an opportunity cost of, you know, should the city manager be spending all of that time in planning, or can we get a community development director? And, you know, so the recommendation for you is what I think is going to best serve the city for a longer term. And, you know, I think we probably could have done this a long time ago, and we probably would have avoided some of the pitfalls we fall into with regard to planning. So I guess I'm not sure what to say, but no, I don't, I don't think it would be better to do that. I think it would be better to, our recommendation is, is what it is.
Well, and I agree with you. I think that your time would be better spent in other areas and that our effort and priority should be to hire a community development director. I'm not sure what the issue is, if it's not pay, if our pay is comparable to other positions in, you know, Humboldt or at least, you know, the close areas. I think we need to prioritize getting a community development director onboard. That would alleviate a lot of the issues that you're talking about. I don't know, I just have an issue with promoting somebody into a planner two position and not looking extensively for somebody to fill this development director.
One thing that might add some clarity, right now, the senior administrative assistant, the pay scale for that job is two-thirds of the way through what a planner two pay scale was. So the suggestion of moving to a planner one would require her taking a pay cut, which doesn't make any sense, you know, because she's stepping up and taking more responsibilities. And so really, our solution to that is to invest in an employee who's demonstrated the aptitude and interest to do a job like this and to give them a certain amount, a reasonable amount of time to get that planning certificate. There's online courses through UC Davis Extension where you can get the CEQA background, you can get environmental impact analysis. And so, you know, it's not uncommon, other positions that come on with the city will give them a certain amount of time if they don't have those minimum requirements, but in my opinion, receiving one of those, going through the intensive coursework, which she would do on her own time to receive one of those certificates, is, you know, giving her the time makes sense. I think it serves the city to, you know, have somebody that you know is proven and can deliver and invest in that employee, even if it takes a year to get their certificates. A planner one is an entry-level position, and she's far beyond an entry-level position. And so, you know, there's really only two salary steps that she would be able to take above where she's at now to grow into. So it's not a huge change, given the responsibility level increase.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Is the only change on the pay rate schedule at one position?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we'll open public comment. Anybody from the public like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the proposed staff classification and full-time pay rate schedule changes for the community development department.
A second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Roll call, please. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
No.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent? Okay, our next item is city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. I'd like to review the upcoming meeting schedules. So our next council meeting will be on October 2nd at 6:00 PM. Our next planning commission meeting will be on September 26th at 6:00 PM. Our next Measure E meeting will be tomorrow on September 19th at 5:30 PM. Our next RONER Community Recreation Park District meeting will be on October 4th at 2:30, and our next Business Improvement District meeting will be on September 26th at 2023. You might notice that we have somebody different besides Siana here today. Ashley's been on for five weeks now, and so I'm just pleased that she's been able to take over as city clerk, and we have a backup to Siana who is off on vacation for a couple of weeks. So we're pleased that we have the extra coverage from the city clerk's office and that we've been able to bring Ashley up to speed so quickly. Just a few things. One, we did submit a grant for the Vansill Forest expansion to add another seven acres to the 13 acres next to the city's Vansill Reservoir. There's some forests with the understanding there could be some trails and connections from the Vansill neighborhood. So we had a site visit with the State Parks representative. So we always keep our fingers crossed that this could happen, and we could add a little bit of land that wouldn't take much management from the city. So we expect to hear back on that from the end of the year. Another item is I went to the Chamber of Commerce lunch. It's great that they've been getting some good speakers. The last meeting, they had Vince Rizzo with the Fortuna Mills Commerce Center, who bought the former Palco Mill site, and today they had a representative from the Great Redwood Trail, Carol Vandemere with RCAA. And so she presented the Great Redwood Trail project to the Chamber of Commerce lunch. And there's, those are being really well-attended. The room's been packed at the last couple of meetings, and so it's great to see a lot of folks from the Chamber of Commerce getting together instead of that post-COVID lull that we had with only one or two people showing up. So there's some good energy, and I know there's a real effort on behalf of the chamber to get some good speakers in there. So I'm excited to see who's coming up next, and I might even present sometime in November. One of my major focuses over the last few weeks has been pulling together the Reconnecting Communities grant. We're working on one state and one federal, and it's taken a lot of time. There's a lot of things from talking to community partners, others who would be involved, and really getting that support from the community and being able to demonstrate that in the grant, and then working with our grant team, trying to pull together figures. So it's been a huge push. We have the first one that's due this Wednesday on the 20th, and then we have one just about a week later for the federal one. So it's crunch time right now, so if you call me and I don't answer, we're probably working on those grants for the reconnecting communities. And then I'd just like to say that, you know, the contractor and Brendan are doing a great job on the police facility that's moving forward. Decisions are getting made. Right now, they're trying to work quickly to get it dried in. They're getting the siding up, they're working on the roofing, and so it's very exciting to see that happening. And one of the things that'll be coming up soon is we're starting to get a clearer picture on the budget. We have estimates from PG&Es, what their reconnection is, and I know Brendan's working on estimates from the contractor to see how much it's going to cost to do our part of the service connection, but soon we'll be bringing back some of the numbers that we are projecting for a final budget on that project in the near future. So, you know, and there's some additions, there's some things that our police department have identified as needed equipment, so we're trying to bring all that together and come to the council at one time and not piecemeal you when we're trying to look at the final budget for that. But we're trying to finish it right and do all the things that need to be done, but not go too crazy either, so.
Is there an estimated time for that to be done?
Hate to do that, but yeah, they're estimating completing sometime by the end of January, but there's always delays that happen. So, you know, I would say in the first quarter of next year that we should be able to move into that facility.
Nice.
So things are, and so that's, you know, and just one more thing to report. A lot of people wonder what's happening with the Monday Club, but I'm working with our engineering department. Matt Nyberg is working to get proposals from a couple of architects so that we could find somebody to try to replace that chimney in a way that will be seismically more resilient and then has a similar look to what was there before. And we've had trouble bringing somebody on, but we have a couple of architects that we think are interested in working with the city on that now. So apologize for the black plastic on the front of Monday Club. No one wants it there. But we also received $54,000 from our risk pool to fix it, so we have a little bit of money that's not coming out of the city coffers, and we'll be moving on that as quick as we can. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Council reports. Councilmember Conley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not much to report. I'm in between meetings, and our next one is canceled because a bunch of people are going out of town for various meetings, so we decided to cancel the next one.
Councilmember Losi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also have very little to report. Our LAFCO meeting for September was canceled, and we haven't had a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting yet, so maybe next time.
Thank you. Councilmember Mobley?
I also have nothing to report.
Making a time limit. Councilmember Johnson? I mean, Mayor Protem Johnson?
It's a good thing these people, I got pages here. No, I, I was able to attend a ceremony, remembering and honoring Bill Hummel for his service with the Vets Hall as a veteran himself and his work with the Daughters of the American Revolution. He is constantly, he's the guy you see standing out front with a laptop and a tablet, programming the portable message sign out there. And he's always working on that. He's been a head of business here, Hummel Tires, with his brother Hal, and he was always ready to, day or night, they were able to help meet the needs of the city after hours and during the day. Eventually, just his daughters, Hal's daughters, took it over. So anyway, Bill was honored with that. So anyway, Bill was honored with that Saturday at the Oddfellas Hall out on Roanokeville and School. Also had a historical commission this last week. And our Measure E committee member and Walt Wilson donated a 1922 automobile repair encyclopedia. So if you want to see what auto repairs were like back in the 20s, you can see what's in that book. There's a lot of stuff in there that we wouldn't even know about today. And I'm, who knows, Walt may have firsthand knowledge with some of it. Also attended a Caltrans meeting with the department, department, division heads and the Caltrans engineers and some of the local representatives from Humboldt and Del Norte County. And got a lot of updates with things. 199 did a lot of, those fires up there had, did a lot of damage. And burning up the wooden posts on the guardrails, having debris flows running down onto the roadway because of the ground drying out from the heat of the fires. A lot of things, that's why the road right now, if you take 199, it's completely closed between 8:00 and 11:00 in the morning and 1:00 and 4:00 in the afternoon, and it's open to one-way controlled traffic in between those times and then after 4:00. So it's not a quick route to take. Another thing is that the, they have narrowed down to two choices for the Last Chance Grade Project. And I know it's taken forever, and this is hopefully the last report on that. But they're working through that, and hopefully with the repairs that have already been done, it would be open to two-way traffic sometime after the 27th of September, but hopefully by the 1st of October. There will still be some work going on up the hills, but they're with the two options of a tunnel or to keep it at the same alignment that it's at now. And the alignment that it's at now does not seem too stable. So we're, they're working through it. And hopefully, we're talking about the chamber meetings. Hopefully at the, I'm penciled in tentatively for October 16th, we'll have a report and a presentation on the Indianola Project. A lot of people ask questions about it all the time, want to know more. And I asked some questions while I was there, and we, hopefully, we'll have a chance to have a slideshow and a Q and A on that. So keep, keep your ears open. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. And I'll keep this short. I have nothing to report. Motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.